We call the meeting to order. Good evening, everyone. This is the Village of Riverside Board of Trustees regular meeting for Thursday, January 15th, 2015. Happy New Year to everyone. Time is seven o'clock. Well, we have everybody except our votes clerk.
Who calls the roll?
You want me to do it?
Here she is.
President Suss.
Here.
Trustee Sussman, here. Trustee Hamilton, here. Trustee Pollak, here. Trustee Ballerine, here. Trustee Collins, here. Trustee Foley, here.
We have four of them. If you'd please rise for the flag.
(Inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for those of you who are with us in the room tonight. If you'd like to speak to the board, you may do so at any time. You could either just talk during public comment, or you can wait until this is an agenda item if you would rather do that. I just ask that you be recognized by the president and that you make your comments from the podium so that the people can steer and see what you have to say at home. I've asked for a motion from the trustees to do a little reordering of the agenda. We're going to bring up, it's our first item tonight prior to presentations and public comment, a resolution approving an employment agreement. And this is an especially happy night for our village because young William right there. The village board has agreed to name Jessica Francis as our permanent village manager. Jessica was, has served the, with the Village of Riverside since 2012 as our finance director and then for interim, as interim manager for the last four months. And I think that the last four months, I think she's gotten about two years' worth of experience in the last two months. But we're very, very excited to welcome Jessica as a permanent member of the Riverside family. So I have a resolution to present. Whereas the Village of Riverside has employed Jessica Francis as finance director since January 23, 2012, and is interim village manager since September 15, 2014. And whereas the village president and board of trustees and Francis now mutually desire to remove the interim designation and to continue Francis's employment in the position of village manager under the terms and conditions set forth in the attached employment agreement. And whereas the village board and the village president and board of trustees had determined that it is in the best interest of the village to approve and authorize the execution of the employment agreement, therefore be it resolved by the president and the board of trustees of the Village of Riverside that the preamble and resolution shall be adopted and Ms. Francis will be our new village manager. So I would ask for a motion and a second. Motion by Mr. Foley. Second. If Sussman, any comment? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Trustee Hamilton, aye. Trustee Pollak, aye. Trustee Ballerine, aye. Trustee Collins, aye. Trustee Foley, aye.
And even though there's not a "aye," I say "aye." And we wanted to welcome, Jessica has her family here with us tonight. And the public service runs in the family. Your husband, Bill, is here, nine-and-a-half-year police officer for Mount Prospect. And we've got little William there, and James is back there somewhere, too. Bill, thank you for sharing her with us. She's got two families now. What did you like? What did you want?
I've enjoyed my last three years, and I look forward to continuing my service for the Village of Riverside.
You're here. Thank you. Okay, going back now to our regular order of business. First up are presentations and public comment. We have some very nice awards this evening to talk about. First up is a presentation, Police Officer Isaac Hamilton for the Cook County Award of Merit. Chief Weitzel.
Before I go into, lean about Isaac, I would tell the president and board that I fully support the manager, and you made a wise decision. And I look forward to working with Jessica for years to come. So I was actually on her selection committee when they hired her for finance director, so I kind of figure she owes me a little bit there now that she's a manager. But no, I think you made a wise choice. And I think for the police department's perspective, we're going to work with her in her office. You can be assured of that. I want to tell you a little bit about Isaac Hamilton's award. As the president knows, and maybe some of the board members, each year the Cook County Sheriff, Tom Dart, allows agencies in Cook County to put in for awards for their officers for two categories, one being valor and one being merit. And it goes to a selection committee, the sheriff gives it to his own selection committee, and then they notify you whether they believe the selection committee, your nomination, local nomination meets their criteria. If so, they have, they hold an award ceremony. Myself, Deputy Chief David Cruel, and Lieutenant Bill Gutchick met, and we submitted collectively Isaac Hamilton's name to the sheriff's office for the award, and they agreed with us. And there was an award ceremony held in November at Moraine Valley Community College where myself and Lieutenant Gutchick attended, where Isaac was given the Cook County Sheriff's Award of Merit. And what the Award of Merit is for, it represents that, in our opinion, being myself, David Cruel, and Lieutenant Gutchick, that Isaac Hamilton represents what we want in police officers in ethics, morals, his work ethic, his production, his attitude. It's infectious. Now, Isaac's been with us since, oh, December of 2012, and so that's basically three years, and comes to work every day, ready to work. He's much happier now that he's off permanent midnights and on afternoons. And I think his wife is very happy about that. But, so he comes in, he's happy, he's enthusiastic, it's contagious. As you know, we have officers that'll come on after him, they look up to him. With only three years on, they're already seeking advice from him. That speaks a lot to his credibility. He's a, has a four-year degree from North Central College, went to school for sometime to Carroll University in Waukesha, Wisconsin. And I mention that because both my sons went to there, graduated there. So we went to the award ceremony, it was very nice. There was probably about 82 officers that received awards from the sheriff's police throughout many different agencies in Cook County. And Isaac brought his wife to the ceremony. And I just wanted the board to know that, you know, he had an outstanding officer here that represented our agency and represented our village in the most professional manner. And he was well-deserving of the award. So I just wanted to make sure the board knew that he received the award, and we're very proud of him. And if Isaac, if you'd like to address the board, you could, if you'd like to say anything. It's up to you.
Thank you. I've been here for, like Chief said, almost still going on three years. I've enjoyed every minute of it. I've got a crazy life at home with twins and a six-year-old, so working the kind of hours I do, it's fun back at home. But yes, my wife is very happy, I'm off on midnights, but now she's upset that I'm on afternoons. It's a whole other battle, but I appreciate the opportunity to work for the village, and I've enjoyed every minute of it.
Congratulations.
I want to ask Deputy Chief to come up. I'd also like to inform the board about a second recognition that happened in December. Deputy Chief Cruel received the Cook, the Northwestern University Center for Public Safety's Leadership Award, which is no easy task. In order to be eligible for that recognition or award, you have to complete the full series of leadership and management educational programs that Northwestern University offers, which David did in 2014. He did not start in 2014, it is a long process. But in that process, he graduated from the Northwestern University School of Police Staff in Command, the School of Police Supervision, and the Executive Management Program. The Staff in Command School is 10 weeks alone over five months, it's two weeks every month. The Executive Management Program is an 80-hour program, and the Supervision of Police Personnel is another 80-hour program. And their university-level education, it's really not a training seminar they're going to, this is college and advanced college management and leadership. He was presented the award in December, actually on December 12th at the Doubletree in Skokie. That's because that's where Northwestern held their graduation for Staff in Command, and they also gave out the leadership awards at that time. It's not a, like I said, easily obtainable. In the entire state of Illinois, there's less than 350 chiefs or deputy chiefs that have that designation, and David is now one of them. So I wanted to bring to the board's attention that we have a very capable officer, we have a very capable deputy chief. When I'm not at the village, he steps in and handles day-to-day operations. I think the manager could back me up on the fact that my goal is to have it seamless. If for some reason I'm on vacation or I'm not here, the management team at the village hall and the residents can turn to the deputy chief and you not lose a beat. And I think that happens. So I'm honored that David was able to obtain that, and I'm also honored that the village is able to recognize the need for that, because the Village of Riverside paid for that education. It's in our training budget, but I'm glad that the board sees that those dollars are worthy to spend on our personnel, and I wanted you to see the return that you get on your investment. So I would just say that I congratulate David, and I'm hoping that he stays for many, many more years. David, if you'd like to address the board.
Thank you, Chief. Just want to say thank you to the village board, Chief Weitzel, for giving me the opportunity to attend the training class. It was a worthwhile and very eye-opening experience. Hopefully I'll be able to put what I learned to the best use to the village and the citizens of Riverside. That's my main goal with everything, and also congratulations, village manager Francis, on your achievement. And I look forward to working with all of you in the near future. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Congratulations. Thank you, Mr. President. As usual, the caliber of our police department is reflective of its leadership, so we're very proud of you and all of your departments. Next up, we have another nice thing, and I'm going to ask Karina Conches to join me up at the podium for a proclamation.
Whereas Karina Conches is a lifelong resident of the Village of Riverside, having attended Howser Junior High School and Riverside Brookfield High School. Whereas Ms. Conches began her career with Riverside TV as a cable technician and production assistant in 2005, and went on to become RTV's production supervisor and key employee, recruiting production assistants from her students at Howser and area high schools, and working diligently to expand the capabilities of Riverside TV to televise village, board meetings, and other important community events. And whereas Ms. Conches has been instrumental in fostering cooperation between Riverside TV, Riverside Brookfield TV, and Lyons Township High School TV in order to enhance the broadcasting and programming capabilities of Riverside TV, and thereby benefits the entire Riverside community by fostering openness and transparency. And whereas Ms. Conches has been a dedicated and active member of the Howser Junior High School staff since 2005, where she currently teaches. She teaches communication and media communication, and serves the staff liaison for the Fall Play, the Yearbook, and Paw Print's TV. And whereas Karina Conches has been an excellent role model for the many students whom she has recruited and trained as RTV production assistants through her 10 years of service, now therefore be it resolved that we, the members of the village board of Riverside and the members of the Riverside Cable Commission, do hereby express to Karina Conches our sincere and heartfelt thanks for her outstanding service and contributions to the Village of Riverside and Riverside TV.
And we know this could be a focus because of the nice.
Well, it's definitely different to be on this side of the camera. It's definitely been an honor and a privilege to be a part of Riverside TV, and it's transformation over the last 10 years. We've done definitely a lot of baby steps that have turned into big steps, that have turned into steps that are continuing. I'm very grateful to have worked with such a supportive board and village staff, an experienced and dedicated commission, and a creative and hard-working production team. Without them, any decisions that we had made, if they hadn't implemented them, it just wouldn't have happened. I'm proud of having been a part of documenting and recording such a special place as Riverside. It is my birthplace, and it's near and dear to my heart and to a lot of residents here. And so I thank you for that opportunity, and I'm actually very excited for the future of Riverside TV and how much more we can bring to the village to keep us together. Thank you very much.
Congratulations, and thank you.
Thank you very much. You know, in the last four years, that, three years that I've been here, Karina, what, was in 2012 or something like that, we were working with a VHS. Today, you know, in 2012, we had 380 views on YouTube. Today, we are over 30, 32,000 views on YouTube. The RB TV staff has produced over 100,000 minutes of video with D-96, with the township, with these board meetings. You've done a phenomenal job, and a lot of it is, you're recruiting from the halls of Howser through RB and bringing these wonderful, talented kids into the, into the RB TV studio. And tonight is a real exciting moment. If you notice, the big lights aren't on each side. Tonight, we are, for the first time, streaming this board meeting live on the internet. It won't be, not going to be advertised until we make sure we get all the bugs out, but tonight is a first, and we tested it, and it looks really, really good. And it's a great night for you to go out, so thank you for everything you've done for us.
Thank you. Thank you.
So that's why these lights are all off, is that I had to bring a reading light for myself.
We'll have to go into makeup before we get into the show.
Next up, we have some follow-up comments concerning the Burlington streetscape. This is a follow-up to our November Town Hall meeting, and Director Apt, you're going to give us a little briefing?
Yes, just kind of a follow-up of what's been progressing since our Town Hall meeting. We had our coordination meeting with IDOT and the feds for the project, or went well, was on Tuesday. They were very pleased with our project and our process, and the fact that we're implementing something that kind of came out of the CMAP process, which was also a federal grant that we received. So there was a lot of excitement about the project, and so they're going to work with us to get the project going through and try to meet the deadlines that we told them that we were trying to meet. So a submittal is going to be happening at the end of this week, and we'll be moving through the process towards our June, our, you know, expected June letting date, so that construction can commence this year. So that's kind of the status we're at right now.
Any questions or comments? Thank you, Director. It's now time for public comment. Would anyone like to address the board this evening? Hearing none, we'll move on to reports of village officers. I have nothing this evening, other than welcoming our new village manager. I think we've already done that. So I'll let you give your first village manager's report.
Well, I actually have nothing to record this evening.
My mom used to say, "No news is good news."
That's going to be true.
All right, moving on to the approval of the consent agenda. Are there any items that any trustee needs to remove for discussion? Hearing none, I'd ask for a motion and a second. Motion by Ms. Hamilton. Second on Ms. Collins. Please call the roll.
Trustee Sussman, aye. Trustee Hamilton, aye. Trustee Collins, aye. Trustee Ballerine, aye. Trustee Collins, aye. Trustee Foley, aye.
Question carries. Before we leave the consent agenda, however, I did want to call attention to one item that we just approved, that is, will now be in effect here. And that is an arrangement we, that the village now has with the Water Reclamation District in terms of supplying rain barrels, free rain barrels. And I'll just read you a little piece of the press release that the Reclamation District gave to us. Under the intergovernmental agreement that we entered into this evening, a village can make rain barrels available to residents free of charge who meet certain requirements. So if you're at home, see if this is a house, if this is your house I'm talking about. The resident must have a property that has downspouts that are directly connected to the sewer system. The homeowner must agree to disconnect all downspouts from the sewer system, and then in return, the homeowner will get rain barrels that can be placed on each downspout. So if that is something that you'd be interested in, please contact, should they contact you or should they contract, contact Public Works?
We can contact the manager's office.
Because I just call, I'll contact Ms. Francis, and she can give you further information. But it's a, it's a nice addition to our ongoing efforts for sustainability and green infrastructure. Next up are ordinances and resolutions. And first up is a resolution authorizing the termination of supplier services. Yes. Oh, I'm sorry, please.
I just wanted to say that the Riverside Safe Environment Commission, in conjunction with the Riverside Police Department, Officer Greenwald, will be putting out a discussion for parents on the evening of February 3rd here in the village hall on the second floor in recognizing drug use in your teenager. I want to commend Officer Greenwald for working with the Safe Environment Committee and putting this together. Tom, do you have anything to add on this?
They finished up the program last week with this, with the Safe Environment Commission. They approved the PowerPoint, and the commission and the police department was publicizing it this week and next week through the schools and the parent organizations. But it is, it is a direct effort between the SEC and the police department. They're very much involved in the process also.
That's all, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Foley. Are there any other liaison reports? I didn't mean to skip over it. Okay, hearing none, now we will move on to our ordinances and resolutions. The first up is a resolution authorizing the termination of supplier services with First Energy Solutions Corporation under a master power supply agreement for the Village of Riverside Electrical Aggregation Program. Ms. Francis.
The reason why this item is worded as it is on the agenda, because I wanted to make sure that we afforded the village board the ability, that if they so choose to terminate the program after hearing the various options that NYMEC will be providing you this evening, you have the choice to do so. So that is why this resolution is being presented. The rates with regard to ComEd versus what we have through electric aggregation, there has been a disparity between the two. We've watched the rates over the last few months, hoping that disparity would shrink. It has not, and so that is why we want to provide various options to the village board with regard to electric aggregation, one being if the board so chooses, is terminating the agreement. We must remember that when we chose First Energy, it was part of, we were paying a slight premium in comparison to ComEd at that point in time, but it was green energy. What I mean by green energy is that it was whether solar, it wasn't the typical fossil fuels. So, and Sharon Derling is here this evening, and she can provide a little bit more background. She is representative from NYMEC, who we work with through the electric aggregation.
Thanks, Jessica. I'm happy to take all questions, but the good thing is there are some good options, one being to just terminate the program, and it's pretty rare, I think, I only know of two other communities that have this, you know, ripcord option. You can give First Energy Solutions notice, and I believe it would be within one to two billing cycles, so likely by April, folks would be moved back to the ComEd rate. And it would be pretty simple, and we'd be happy to enable that happening. Talked to your attorney earlier today. Again, what that would do is folks would go back to the ComEd rate, and the begging question is, okay, great, what's the ComEd rate? It did go up, as we had expected, up two cents a year ago, June. And what we didn't expect is this floating portion has brought it down on the lower end of the range. So what would it be? It's actually was adjusted just incrementally this week, so the number that you have in front of me, you, is a tiny bit different than what I found today. It's going to float between 7.072 cents per kilowatt hour, up to 8.072 cents per kilowatt hour. Which way is it going to be, you might ask? I couldn't tell you, but it's been steadily on the lower end, closer to the seven, seven cent range. So, you know, this gives you an opportunity as a board to terminate the program. There are essentially three options, so I'll tell you the other two. One, continue as is. We wouldn't recommend that, but it's a possibility, just to do nothing. And then the third kind of breaks down into two. You could go back and seek competitive bids, and the reason I'm mentioning that is we've had a pretty precipitous falloff. I think you may have been given an electric pricing chart, you know, you've been watching gas prices, a lot of energy prices have dropped off sharply. So today, just for an indication, got some bid pricing. Where are things today? One indication from Constellation, New Energy, was a two-year term at 6.85 cents per kilowatt hour, roughly a penny below where you are. To be clear, if you were to accept a bid, say at your next, look at competitive bids, were to accept a competitive bid, if it's in that range at your next board meeting, it would again take until about April for that to start. It's about similar timing. But I think the begging question then is, great, Sharon, what's the ComEd rate? Because it changes June 1st of every year. We always want to know where are we versus the ComEd rate? The ComEd rate will be repriced in June. It's very difficult to determine. It's, today, when I gave you that range, there's, it's, I don't know if I was real clear, the fixed portion is 7.572. That's why I gave you a range of 7.0 to 8.0. So it's set at 7.562. We think it could come off a little bit from that number, but for a few other reasons, there's some components that go up a little bit. They purchased a half of that number in previous years at higher prices, so we don't think it can come down to current market levels, but it may come off a little bit. I understand the board isn't in the business of trading markets or projecting markets. We don't project markets. That's why, I think it boils down to three options. Terminate the program, we can do that for you right away. Or accept a bid to start in April, might be about a penny below where you are. You can tell the residents, we had this opportunity to terminate the program, we can save you about a penny per kilowatt hour going forward, which is about 85 bucks per household per year. Just to put some real numbers on it. Or there's a third thing, if, you know, you could wait until June 1st, when you know the ComEd rate, you know, you'd still be maintaining this program, a little bit underwater every month. It's not a place we like to be, but then in June, look at bids and decide whether to continue or not. Any, have I been clear about that? Any questions about those three? I've kind of thrown out the option of continuing as is. Yes, trustee?
Is this, are these the green prices, or the, these are the green prices?
The indications I got today, they're not competitive bids, they were just indications, but they're not green prices. The green price for that would be about probably six point, close to 6.92.
Okay, so it's usually a fixed difference between the green and the traditional pricing?
Yes.
Okay, all right, that helps. Thank you.
You should also know that ComEd's price-
You should also know that ComEd's price is not green.
That's correct. The ComEd rate is not-
They don't offer that option, right?
Right, their price is not green at all. They don't offer that option.
That is correct. They do not offer, it's not obtainable through ComEd. It's what we call traditional or brown or whatever you want to call it.
Well, my personal feeling would be that we would, we would, you know, we would like to stay as green as we possibly could. I mean, that is our, that is our goal, village-wide. So I would think the best option for us to do is possibly go out for new bids and see what we can, see what we can grasp on the market and save ourselves, you know, a penny a kilowatt hour and get more closer to that ComEd rate. But if we go out for bids now, you say they'll come back in, they'll come back in in April, correct?
Well, we could get prices, say, at your next board meeting, is that, I think, three weeks? So it would be implemented, takes about two months to implement it, we could, I could push it through to happen in April. But then we get a new rate announced June 1st. What's that going to be? And I could tell you a little bit more about, it's really, you know, weather patterns, gas prices, who'd have thought? You know, it's a very difficult estimation. We think it could come off a little bit. This doesn't answer your question, but another, some communities have continued programs considering at least a rate cap. I told you the ComEd floats 7.0 something, 8.0 something. It could be eight cents next month, I don't know. One thing the village program offers is at least your green energy and at least a rate cap. We know we won't be above that level. And folks who aren't comfortable with that have the option of not participating or leaving for no cost at any point in time. I think you know that, to be all right.
Does, does the rate that ComEd sets in June affect the competitors' rates?
No, it does not. They do go out to market and will probably in April. So if this trend continues downward, about half of their rate, they'll be able to buy at lower prices, but they bought half of it in previous years in the forward market.
I'm just wondering if we waited till June, if that affects, if we're looking for a green rate, if the rate that ComEd set is going to affect what the green rates are going to be?
It would not.
Okay.
We're not talking about, we're not talking about a lot. We're talking about small, small increments at best, if we waited from April to June. I mean, I mean, six to eight, it may, you know-
Two months.
Yeah, there's probably very little, little, little margins.
So, help me again, if we're committed to green energy, why would we want to wait till June?
That was my question, that was what my question was.
Because ComEd's still not going to, regardless of their price, they're not going to offer us green energy. So the only reason would be if we think that ComEd will come down so far compared to the competitors that we really can't-
Justify.
Can't justify it, but that's never been the case. And in fact, you've just heard that they've already bought half of their supply at a higher price. So I'm not quite certain.
And that's where I was coming from with my question, was is that going to affect the competitors? If it's not, I don't see the point in waiting.
Wait, exactly.
Yeah, I don't either. Unless we think green rates are going to come down dramatically.
And it's important to know that, you know, when we did this program, I mean, we did it at the wheelhouse time. And we've saved almost, our residents saved almost a million dollars in energy rates. Because it was, we did it right at the right time. I still see in election cycles that they're still doing this referendum to do this, and it just doesn't seem like-
You are correct.
You're not, you're getting the real bang for the buck like, like you got three years ago when we did it. But again, I would, I would recommend that we go out for bids on the green rate and see what it comes back to in April and see where that goes.
Yes.
Jessica, do you have an opinion on this?
I, I am indifferent. I think the green, it depends on what the initiative is with regard to the village board. I know that the board has felt strongly about the green energy, and I'm fine with rebidying. I just wanted to make sure that the board was aware of the disparity in the costs, especially since we've been monitoring it so closely over the last couple of months.
So again, the timing would be, we would know about the bid results in three weeks, and then it would be implemented two months after that.
Well, I believe you'd have to pass a resolution to accept a bid, so we could present it at your next board meeting or at the afternoon.
And we're only interested in getting bids for green, green energy, correct?
For 100% green, yes. Could receive that.
Right, so that's our consensus, it sounds like. So we don't need to do anything officially with this, right? This was just-
We'll proceed then. Thank you.
Thank you, Sharon, appreciate it. Next up is a resolution supporting the resurfacing of Burlington Street and beautification of the Burlington Streetscape in Riverside's central business district pursuant to surface transportation program and Illinois Transportation Enhancement Program funding. Ms. Appley, are you going to do this, or?
All righty, we have copies of the latest plan in front of you to consider as we look at this. Did you want me to go ahead and read through the resolution, or do you just want to kind of give a brief overview on the funding and?
Yeah, just give us an overview, and then I'll go through the-
Right, so back in 2012, the village received the funding through STP to resurface Burlington from Long Common all the way to Harlem. And then in August 2013, we submitted our application for the ITEP funding grant. We received word that that was awarded to us in April of 2014. At that point, we have had several public meetings, discussions about the design as we've moved forward with getting that finalized. We had our town hall in November of 2014. We received more public comment on the plan and the project. Additional changes were made on the plan based on the feedback that we received at that meeting and subsequent village board meetings, conversations and meetings we've had with various stakeholders in town since that time. The village board and staff do continue to receive comments and feedback regarding the project from residents and business owners and commissions. However, staff is comfortable with the design at this stage where it is ready for submission for review to IDOT and Federal Highway Administration. So you have, we're looking for a motion to approve the resolution supporting the resurfacing and streetscape plan as you have the plan before you, so.
I'd ask for a motion in a second.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Foley, second by Mr. Valerie, in a discussion. And I will just note that this resolution really grew out of the meeting that Director Francis, I mean Director Appley and Manager Francis had on Tuesday. This was a resolution that the Federal Highway Administration suggested that we should pass, just to be clear about the broad-based support for the, for the project and the plan. So having said that, anything else? Please call the roll.
Trustee Sussman.
Aye.
Trustee Hamilton.
Aye.
Trustee Collins.
Aye.
Trustee Valerie.
Aye.
Trustee Collins.
Aye.
Trustee Foley.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Appley.
And we do have, public is interested, the pictures of the site plan as well as a rendering of the street corner are available on the village's website.
Thank you.
Can we just also say that if there are additional comments, they should contact the village hall?
Yeah, should contact either Manager Francis or myself.
Next up, we have some general discussion items. And first up is a discussion of crossing guards, and this arises because of an alternate intergovernmental agreement that the District 96 has presented to the village for our consideration. Manager Francis.
In 2013, the village board had approached District 96 and District 208 with regard to cost sharing of the crossing guards. In 2013, the village then forwarded to D-96 an intergovernmental agreement with regard to cost sharing. With regard to that, D-96 did not approve ours. However, over the summer, they contacted the village and stated that they would cost share the crossing guards. However, the village needed to remove the lunchtime crossing guard. And so the village, in fact, did so with the understanding that D-96 would then reimburse the village for 50% of the cost of the crossing guards. In late, late 2014, D-96 forwarded over an intergovernmental agreement that indicates that there is actually a cap within the amount that they're willing to reimburse the village. There is some existing language that was, in the previous IGA, however, I would recommend that if the board wanted to revisit this intergovernmental agreement with D-96, that we remove specific hours related to the crossing guards and make it general to say two hours in the morning, two hours in the afternoon, given the fact of the early release, and so the timing of the crossing guards is a little bit different. Not to split hairs, but we should probably have that a little bit more, generally speaking. Also, they have a cap in which they're willing to reimburse the village for. That being said, staff, and Chief Weitzel is here also, if there are any questions that need to be addressed with regard to the crossing guards, staff is not recommending that we approve the agreement as it is currently outlined.
What is the cap? The cap was like 25,500 or something like that. What does that actually, what does that actually mean in hours? Is that, is that 50% or is it less in hours? Where exactly is that falling in?
Well, it can fluctuate. So either, either we'd have to adopt this every given year, we'd have to make modifications. I'm looking for more of an agreement where we don't have to spend legal fees on an intergovernmental agreement where it's closed with regard to the dollar amount. Whether or not it's revisited every five years, that makes more sense, or you say it's not going to increase with regard to Consumer Price Index, and that's your cap. But to have a dollar, a specific dollar amount outlined in the agreement, I don't, I think that it limits, it puts restrictions on staff with regard to the crossing guards.
One other question. Let's, if a crossing guard, I don't know what they make, but let's just say they make $15 an hour. If a crossing guard does not show up for a four-hour day, and I see by the agreement that we either put in a community service officer or a full-time police officer, which both of those people make more than $15 an hour, are we recouped that money?
That's one of the things that bothers me, that and the fact that if for some reason there's an emergency and the crossing guards need to work more than the number of hours that have been stipulated, then even though it may have absolutely nothing to do with the village, the village becomes responsible for paying those people or saying, "I'm sorry, it's an emergency, but you can't work anymore," which isn't a good idea. So I have that concern about this agreement, too, the way the cap works. It works on hours, it works on crossing guards getting ill, it works on all sorts of things that don't really seem like a good agreement to me.
So anytime a crossing guard gets ill or doesn't show up, we basically substitute an employee in there at no charge?
That's correct.
I would, I would think from, from the minimum, we should be billing them half of what the crossing guard makes.
We have standby crossing guards, but those have been, been reduced. Manager Francis is absolutely correct when we agreed to drop the afternoon or lunchtime guard because this, this D-96 said it was basically a closed campus, and if you wanted your child, you had to come pick them up by car, which would eliminate their need to have a crossing guard. We did that. We lost one crossing guard as a reduction in time, and that crossing guard now works for City of Berwind. We did replace that guard. And then in the event that the standby can't do it, the CSO does it, but only if he's working. Remember, the CSO's a part-time position, does not work five days a week. So if that, if there is an open position, we're bound to fill with a police officer, which is extremely expensive, but takes away from the road. So there may be times that I have to pay overtime for another officer to cover the street because we are assigning a police officer to that position. It's rare, it doesn't happen often. It does happen more often that the community service officer covers crossings. But it has happened before with a police officer.
Additionally, we don't, we don't charge D-96 or split half our costs for, for example, because we had a few new crossing guards this year for any type of equipment-
Training.
Training. Also, we have to factor in, most recently, workers' comp, any type of liability coverage, and those are, those are hard costs that the village, luckily, we haven't had any claims against us, but if we were to have claims, we have a $50,000 deductible, and they're not liable for any of it.
You could conceivably have some kind of quarterly reconciliation, right?
With regard to-
To the, the, any kind of overtime or increased expenditures.
I think at this point in time, they're only agreeing to the actual individuals that are posted and know extraordinary costs such as insurance and things of that sort.
And I think that we had put in the original agreement that we would handle administrative costs.
I'm sorry, I was talking about overtime. I was talking about overtime, if there's a way of either removing completely the limit and just reconciling it on a quarterly basis or on a monthly basis or whatever.
I think our goal from the very beginning has been to share the cost of the crossing guards or policemen, which, or policewomen, whichever, police officers, whichever, and it would be 50%. And I think it should be 50%.
I agree with that one. I, you know, the cost of the equipment, the training.
Insurance.
Insurance.
Insurance, yeah. I mean, and again, I look at who has, the school district's sitting on a lot more funds than we are the village. I think that there should be a little bit more equal cost sharing involved, especially since the high school has offered to pay more, District 208, and yet a majority of their students are coming from Brookfield. So I really, I'd like to see the school board step up a little bit more on this. And if you're fine with staying with them contributing, how do we have it for, in sharing the cost of, you know, we'll match what, if they only want to do 27%?
And the 25,000, now that we've eliminated the afternoon or the lunchtime guard, is close to that 50% point, but it'll, it'll fluctuate.
And I agree with you, it's, anytime you put a dollar amount into a contract type of thing, it's a bad idea, because there's just, you're going to have to revisit it.
It's, I'm sorry, is this retroactive, then, to the beginning of the school year?
Well, that's the other caveat, was the understanding that we had over the summer was that they were agreeing to the 2014-2015 school year. Then we received this agreement in late 2014, saying that it was for the 2014-2015 school year. So essentially, we're not being, there is a complete transparency here with regard to this matter.
Jessica, for how many-
This is not what we agreed to.
Correct.
For how many years have we been picking up the ownership of this? I mean, going back to forever. I mean, I really think that this should be more of an equal shared cost.
So I think what I- I want to make sure I understand it. The, so we told them 50/50. They came back with an agreement-
And we were handling administration.
Right, and we're handling administration. And they came back saying, "Okay, but with a $25,000 cap." So what did they expect to happen when $50,000 is spent? No crossing guards? They expect that there'll be no crossing guards out there once?
Well, no, it's anticipated that the village would just absorb the difference.
They anticipate-
I would assume as much.
But did they tell you?
They're just capping their costs.
Did they tell you what they expect to happen, then?
No. Basically, what I received was just the agreement that was in the balance, or the IGA, rather.
I think the agreement implies that they'll pay 50% of the cost not to exceed $25,000, so if the cost exceeds that, it's on its own.
Which is, just odd that this should come up six months after the school year starts.
And after we had an agreement that we, in good faith, proceeded with.
Right.
Have we billed them, or have we received any money from the school?
We have billed them, and they have paid. So, but it hasn't hit that $25,000 figure yet. And they haven't contacted us, saying that they're not going to continue to pay it, but once again, we haven't hit their cap of $25,000.
But we, but we have an existing agreement with them for 2014-2015.
It was something that was verbal, we have nothing in writing at this point. It was something that was discussed between the former village manager, and there is documentation stating that there were discussions in the email and back and forth, but apparently this was something that was revisited for District 96 in November at one of their meetings.
Well, I think what I'm hearing is, is that this board expects that the agreement that we entered into with them for 2014-2015 will remain in place, and then we're going to, we'll, we'll work up a new proposal for the 2015-
to, we'll, we'll work up a new proposal for the 2015-2016 school year, taking into account some of the other costs that, that I'm hearing that we would like to try to share. Is that correct?
I'm confused. I thought we went into 2014-2015 presuming that it would be fifty-fifty.
We did.
Okay, well, then we are expecting them to pay us fifty percent. Okay, but that's not a written agreement, it's just documented.
You know, and there's much more to it. Tom, you have officers stationed nearby all the schools before and after. I mean, so we're offering much more than crossing guards. I mean, we stationed police, our own police officers near the school for protection and service to the students and the school itself. So I, I think we've really stepped up and done as much as we can. I really would like to see the, the school district contribute more.
I mean, if we actually build the school districts for the time that our police officers spend in front of the school, either D-96 property or D-208 property, they couldn't afford it. Because we spend, how much did we spend, twenty-five percent, if I remember correctly, on the other side of First Avenue? I mean, it's, it's a huge amount of the day.
There's more, there's more police time spent in, in front of 208, just by the nature of it's a high school. A lot of it is preventive and traffic and parking enforcement, but certainly District 96, a drop-off dismissal, either as a community service officer or a police officer, they rotate. Sometimes they're at Ames, sometimes they're at Houser Central, sometimes they might be on Aitkinside Road behind Houser Central, they may be over by Park if we get a request. So they're not at the same school every day, but they're at a District 96 property every day.
With all due respect, Joe, I don't really want to get into, we're spending time at schools. I mean, that's our responsibility, clearly. We have a responsibility for public safety. That includes what our officers do at the schools, and it includes the crossing guards. But they have a responsibility for public safety as well. And when it comes to the crossing guards, the only reason they're there is because of the schools. And, and in that respect, I feel very strongly it should be fifty-fifty. It should be an equal partnership. You know, the way I read this, this program agreement is they're viewing this as a donation. And, and that's the mindset I think we need to encourage them to change, is to think otherwise. It's not a donation. This is a program that we're sharing, and we're equally responsible. If they have an idea how it can be done better, they should be talking to the police chief about that. They, they need to take some ownership of this program and not just view it as we're making a donation to the village for their program. So, you know, it, it should be fifty-fifty. I do feel strongly about that. I think that, that's only fair. So I believe we have unanimity on this point? Yes, does that give you the guidance?
So will we be revisiting this at a later point with regard to the 2015-2016 school year?
Exactly. And we, our anticipation is, is that our existing agreement will be honored for 2014-2015. Next up is a discussion of sign ordinance goals and objectives. This arose from our previous discussions about the sign ordinance, and Trustee Sussman had wisely suggested that perhaps we needed a bit more of a philosophical discussion about the, the nature and goals that we're trying to reach with the sign ordinance, so that's what we're going to do now. Ms. App, did you want to lead us through this?
So I'm sure we all remember our last meeting on signs. So after a lot of discussion, we still failed to come up with some consensus on the sign ordinance update, the proposed amendments. So at that time, you directed staff to continue enforcing the existing sign ordinance, which I have been. However, we do have the outstanding issue of the non-conforming signs that needs to be addressed and how we are going to proceed with that going forward, but also was the discussion about what really are the goals and objectives of the sign ordinance. So sign ordinance was specifically mentioned as an item to be dealt with in the CMAP plan that was adopted back in 2013. They had some notes on there stating that while the ordinance does not allow pole signs or lighted signs that would be in direct conflict with historic and pedestrian-oriented streets, it may be overly restrictive in the type, size, and location of business signage. Of particular concern to business owners is the existing prohibition on signs that are perpendicular to the building facade. They also stated that, given the vision for Riverside Central Business District, the signs should reflect the historic character while still balancing the needs of the individual businesses. The village should create a new set of design guidelines that strike this balance and clearly outline our expectations. So given that, I have outlined for you in the staff report that you have some ideas of what goals of the sign ordinance update are, based on CMAP's recommendation and kind of the discussions we've had so far. And it's to support and promote local businesses, make the permit process more business-friendly, to enhance the overall image of the downtown, and create a policy for non-conforming signs. For objectives, it would be to allow signage desired by the downtown businesses, to remove sign regulations that are overly restrictive, to eliminate the Plan and Zoning Commission review for sign permits, and make the permit process administrative, create design guidelines that will provide for signs that will positively contribute to the image of the downtown by reflecting our historic character, and then deciding whether to grandfather non-conforming signs or amortize them. So that's kind of the discussion that we need to be having is, how are we going to move forward with these goals? Are these goals that you see as being what we need to meet for the sign ordinance? Or are we already meeting these goals?
Now we're going to talk about it. What do you think?
I think you did a great job outlining our objectives and our goals. I, I still believe very firmly that we should be grandfathering as a start, only because the signs that are in, in the, the businesses have been, you know, they've been, they've been bought, they've been paid for, they've been permitted, and I don't think we have the right to tell people to take them down. But we do have the right to make them, you know, non-conforming, and when they become either the business moves or changes, then we can, we can slowly get rid of these. But, so I'm, I'm still strongly for grandfathering, but your objectives and your goals are, are very, very, very well stated.
I've been, oh, can I talk? I've been really struggling with this, you know, because we talked about that we need to compromise and we need to come to some agreement on this, and, and like Joe, I cannot compromise on grandfathering because I just feel that that is so anti-business doing that. And so I feel like compromising is just conceding that I don't care about the businesses, and I can't do that. So I'm trying, I've been trying to think of, what's the solution here? What do we do? We're, you know, we're at a standstill here. And so my question is, could we approach this a different way? If what we're looking for is to get rid of the signs that people don't like, can we be, can we come up with like examples of signs that we like, get a manufacturer who will make these signs, go to the businesses, try to convince them if we want awnings, if we want whatever, come up with a cost-sharing program so that we'll do it? So instead of saying to them, "Get rid of your ugly sign," go to them and say, "Okay, here's some ideas. We're fixing up the downtown. We'd like for it to look better. Will you work with us on this? Here's some designs. Pick which one you like. We'll help finance it. Let's get you a new sign." And I'm just wondering if we can accomplish the same thing, because as we said, our objective is to try to be business-friendly, to be less restrictive, to, to support the businesses, to make the downtown look better. And I'm just wondering if maybe that type of program doesn't accomplish that without being against the businesses.
Well, I've been in favor of that for several months.
And we do have a cost-sharing program in the budget for next year.
And, but I mean, but more than cost-sharing, to actually have a, a strong program to go out there and really.
Discuss it.
Discuss it and have examples and sit down with each business and show them, you know, here's some examples and here's what we can do, and here's pricing, and, you know.
I'm fine with that. In fact, if you'll recall from the last meeting, we did vote, we, I, I thought we were working toward a compromise. We did, those of, several of us who had voted in favor of amortization actually said that we wouldn't, that we would not support, I mean, that we would not have an amortization program if we could compromise on some of the design, on some of the design elements. And even though we said that, there were, and even though I personally thought that was a compromise, because I feel strongly about, I mean, I, I would like to move forward, I have to be very honest with you and say that I was really blown away by the reception from some of the trustees to what I thought was a viable compromise. And I, um.
And I resemble that remark.
It wasn't, I, I just would like to, I mean, I think there's several, I guess what I'm saying, Joe, I'll buy you something after. But, but I guess what I'm saying is I'd like, there are really several parts to it, right? There's, there's the design element, and there's the amortization or the no amortization. And I'd like to see us, see us, see if we can come to an agreement on the design part of it also, because already, we've already, Doug and I, I can't speak for Doug, maybe he's had an interesting couple of weeks, I don't know, since Christmas.
I haven't thought about signs one.
Okay, but you know, we had said we would.
I'm proud to say.
We had already said that we would move beyond the amortization if we could get some of the design elements in there. So I think, to your point, I, I agree with what you're saying. I think you had used the word a carrot, and I think that that's a really nice way of moving forward with a carrot, and I would support that. I think it's a staff time issue, but I would certainly support that. I would also just like to understand where we, so in, in some sense, I think we're beyond that, so I think the, the sign part, or the elements of design, sorry, I'm not being very elusive, but the elements of design are really what surprised me at the last meeting.
Well, I think where we fell apart at the last meeting is.
The we?
We, where I fell apart at the last meeting is.
Just kidding.
And I appreciate the compromise, but I, I think that we've made, we, we've made so many changes, or there were so many different things, that the ordinance was, was, was way too cumbersome.
Yeah.
And it really needed to be stopped, rethought of, goals and objectives, and then rewritten in a very precise, easy manner. We need to be able to tell people how to get through the variation process, how to get through it quickly, how to get through it efficiently, what exactly we're looking for, examples of what we're looking for, and answer questions like the combustible question. No combustible signs, okay? Would we make all the signs out of metal? That was a question that was brought up last time. So those are the things that, I, I was appreciative of the compromise, but I wasn't prepared to, to vote for an ordinance that had so many holes in it yet. I think this is the exact spot we need to be, where she knows what our objectives are. I don't have a problem with some of the design aspects that were brought up last time, okay? I'm on board with that. Long as we have a variation process that is, is easy to handle and works well with the businesses, we've talked about even a no cost if they go through it, and I, Doug had brought up some points that, you know, that we don't have to be as administrative in a sign variation as, as with a regular variation, so a lot of that stuff could be interjected. So I think this is a great place. I think we did a good job last week as difficult, or last month, as difficult as it was, I think we did a good job by saying no and moving on and coming back to this, and I think we're, at the end of the day, we're all going to get where we want to be, and I think we're going to get there, we're going to be there better. And we're going to be there together.
And I, go ahead, I'm sorry. I think even if you go back to the existing ordinance and the issue that you brought up that you're uncomfortable with, Joe, about the fact that the village approved signs that were not in conformance with that ordinance, those are the, you know, immediate targets for replacement, you know? I mean, they would have been the immediate targets, targets in an, under an amortization, but they shouldn't have been there in the first place, so they're immediate targets for replacement. And I have felt very strongly that unless we're going to do something, and if we made the mistake by approving it, by gosh, we should be establishing a fund to help, to help accomplish what we want to accomplish, because that was our mistake, our error, you know, for having, for having a longstanding sign ordinance that we were not enforcing. So if we can find a way to address that, then I can find a way to eliminate the amortization schedule, but not unless we have a very clear-cut plan to address that.
Mr. Paul? I, I think the substance of what the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended is, is very good. I, I was very proud of the work they did there. I think they recommended a sign ordinance that was good for the Village of Riverside. If, if it's confusing to people, if staff feels like it can be written better, then please do. I mean, I, I'd look to staff to.
To be fair, the sign ordinance itself in its entirety is not necessarily the most user-friendly document to go through, so.
Which I've yet to see a sign ordinance that is user-friendly.
True enough.
But, but point, but my point is, you know, I've heard some talk about rewriting it, it's confusing, and, well, let's fix that. It's, you know, without changing the substance, let's fix that at least. So that, that's, that's a no-brainer, it seems like. The idea of a, of a grant, of assisting, using taxpayer dollars to, to, to help businesses replace the signs, I'm okay with that, with an amortization, but there's no way I would ever support that if we're grandfathering signs. I think there's, you know, what's, what's kind of lost in here, and I, I want to say this without sounding harsh toward businesses, I mean, I value our businesses, we have some great businesses in this community, and I want to keep them, keep them here. But we, as a board, need to remember, they have a civic responsibility here, too, just like any resident of the village has a responsibility to maintain their property up to standards, replace windows that are old and, and dilapidated and broken, mow the grass. Businesses have a civic responsibility as well to the community which they serve, which they, they make their living from. And I think, you know, replacing signs and replacing features like that that have a public appearance are part of their responsibility. Now, having said all that, I am willing to revisit my motion, which included grandfathering of the signs. I'm not in favor of grandfathering, but I'm willing to do that for the sake of getting all the other requirements into our sign ordinance, as I said, which have, you know, I think our, our good requirements make a lot of sense. I'm willing to, to revisit that, and, and I will support that motion again as I did before. I got some feedback after that meeting that it, maybe we should reduce variation difficulty or the difficulty of seeking a variation. I'm all for that. In fact, I know that a sign ordinance variation, I believe, and, and Mr. Mars can help me with this, can be an administrative function where there's no public hearing, it's just a process where they come before the Planning and Zoning Commission for a sign variation, so there's no expense to the business or the community other than staff time in, in processing it. Is that correct?
Well, yeah, because your sign ordinance is outside of your zoning code, you could, you could do it.
Didn't we already say that we were going to give the variation decision to the director? To you? I thought we had already said that.
I don't believe, no.
No, there were.
Initial application.
There were some things that were subject to staff review, but generally, a, a variation would, would not be, but I'm, I'm fine with amending the code to waive, you know, having no variation fee and just, no legal notices, no, no direct expense to the village, they just come before the Planning and Zoning Commission, and they still have to meet those same standards. I don't want to compromise our standards. I don't want to make it sound like we're going to start giving away variations. We're not, I hope not. But, you know, make it easy for business to at least make their appeal and, and let, let the, the Planning Commission and the board decide if they meet the standards for a variation. So I guess to conclude, I am willing to go back to that motion again with that one additional change, and, and to remind everyone, that motion included approving the substance of the Planning and Zoning Commission's recommendation, the elimination of raceway signs and facelit signs and the other recommended, uh, design regulations that they had recommended.
Well, we need a starting point for Sonia to start rewriting it, and I think that's what we're talking about at this point. Do we take the initial recommendations, have to put it in a more user-friendly quote-unquote format, and then start from there to talk about some of the changes we might want to make? Is that, Joe, is that kind of what you're? Is that, Joe, is that kind of what you're saying?
Yeah.
Do you, would that be all right?
I can do that. So take the Planning and Zoning Commission's recommendation without the amortization, and have it just be the grandfathering, and make the changes that need to be made to make any discrepancies gone, and make it a little bit more clear and user-friendly to read through.
Yeah.
And then deal with the variation process. Although, our variation process really is not all that cumbersome.
No, I know, I know. But there is a legal notice required, right?
No, there's no publication of a notice, there's just hand-delivery or first-class mail to the immediately adjacent property owners.
Which we don't have to do.
Or businesses.
Which we don't have to do.
Which we don't have to do.
I would be comfortable just limiting it, maybe just a sign in the window, the sign, it's ironic.
A temporary sign.
No more than 50% of the area, right?
Yeah, I would want to, you know, maybe just, maybe put, put a poster in a window in the business district saying that, and again, this just applies to the downtown district, so it'd be easy just to do the notice with, with a sign in the window, or no notice at all. I mean, I think it's pretty common for sign variations that there's no, no legal notice at all of any sort. Because there's really no, I mean, the impact is more community-wide as opposed to on the immediate businesses. But that's a detail that can be worked out.
Can I ask a related question? There, part of the impetus for doing this was the desire from at least one large, one building owner on Quincy, to get the, what are they called, the perpendicular...
The blade signs?
The blade signs out, and that was something that this individual had been asking for for several years, and that was one, one of the reasons that we moved ahead with this. Is it possible for us to move forward with that one piece of it? Because we're still talking about a couple of months, I mean, I, I don't know if you plan on giving this to us the first meeting in February, and then we vote on it.
Probably not.
Right, but, you know, that was part of the conversation, that instead of asking this individual to come and seek a variation, we would consider the blade signs in general. And here it is, two years later, and we're still talking, I realize two months or three months is nothing compared to a couple of years.
I think we all agreed on the blade signs.
So could we do that?
You don't, you don't like the blade signs?
Oh, no, she... No, I said, no, that's not what my shake has...
I, I know.
I have no problem with it.
The only, the only question is the materials, because...
What are they going to be made of?
In the, in the ordinance, we had that no non-combustible material.
And I know that piecemealing ordinances is probably not the smartest way to do it, but we could, if we agree on the concept and the material, then Sonia could still rework the wording such that it fits in the newly crafted ordinance. I just, and to be clear, I haven't spoken with this individual recently. He may not want to speak with me after all this time, but it is something I think we, I can't say for certain that most, many of us agree. No, you don't?
Oh, I don't disagree, but we can't approve it without them filing for a sign variation until the ordinance is approved.
Why, we can't, a text amendment?
Just do a text amendment.
A text amendment.
The blank sign portion of the sign ordinance.
Yeah, we could do a text amendment, couldn't we?
Just do a text amendment on that.
Because it's a part of the...
I, I wouldn't be comfortable with that.
I would be.
Taking it out of context like that.
I think it's, because part of what we're doing here is, we have in place right now a moratorium on the amortization component of the 2005 ordinance, so now you're suggesting that we add something to the 2005 ordinance that we're getting, that we're, that within the next 60 days, we're going to turn out around and replace.
I am, because I think we're doing exactly what we've said that we don't want to do, which is prolong the agony of businesses for changes.
It's, I mean, I know the person you're talking about, and it's not my impression that they are...
Chomping?
Right.
Yeah, that may, that may be the case. I just feel like it's been going on.
Is that, what do you think, how long do you think it would take you and our attorney to get something back to us?
Mr. President, can I ask, just for clarification and for staff's benefit, when we talk about the simplification process, are we able to go into sections that haven't been touched by the Planning Commission recommendations, and if we think the wording is awkward and that sort of thing, to actually change it?
I think we have an opportunity to make the best sign ordinance that's been rid. So I would say, do whatever you think needs to be done, to make it the best it can be.
Maintaining.
And if that means, if that means...
Right. Keep the substance of it.
But make it simple, clean, correct. And three, two side, three pages, both sides, that's all you do.
Mr. Campbell, did you have something that you wanted to...
Yes. For the materials. Think of my, my issues as process-related. We all participate in the process, so each one of us maybe has that little part, but this is more process. Tonight, I heard a trustee speak of that no sign ordinance is user-friendly. To me, that would say on the flip side that they are all user-unfriendly. And just think about that as a concept going into it. And the, we have to think about the attitude of the entrepreneurs. There have been other comments made throughout this discussion that have been, in my mind, extremely contradictory, where a trustee has said, "Well, we have to be careful because this shouldn't be a pretty ordinance," and then literally minutes later is saying, "But that's ugly sign, so we shouldn't have it," which, again, to me, seems like two statements that can, that are mutually exclusive, they cannot exist together. I, I am glad to hear that trustee Sussman has changed her idea of the carrot, the stick, and now the carrot is bigger than the stick. I think that that is definitely positive movement. But these are concepts that get out into the real world and words that are said that damage the entrepreneur's belief that they will be treated fairly and friendly here. So, um, I went back and did a little bit of research, which took me all the way back to 1965. In 1965, the sign ordinance was four pages double-sided. In 1974, they went crazy, and it went to five pages. In 2005, it went to 18 pages. It's a bad ordinance, it's sloppy, it makes conditions that are not, the village has not given the authority under the law to do. And it's obvious that there was a lot of input where people were doing it piecemeal because they just threw things in another section. And that, for me, has even been confusing, and I'm usually pretty good at picking things apart. One of the things that I brought up last time, which goes back to a previous ordinance, the need exists to reduce visual confusion, restrict signs which overload the public's capacity to receive information. Now, I kind of take exception to somebody saying that I rode a small bus and I have a hard time picking, picking out information as I drive down, you know, the street. It just, that's very insulting, and I think since that's in the purpose, and again, this, I have to go back to 1974 to get this, that it makes an assumption about the purpose of the ordinance that is really very, I think, negative and says bad things about the people who would see the business district. In addition, it's the last ordinance in 2005 that really has been the problem, and I must apologize because I thought that many of the things that I found in the '05 ordinance were the result of this discussion. So I was in error, but reading the new version of it is pretty confusing. The village board, I do not believe, has the authority under the law to make a law that retroactively invalidates lawful behavior. I just don't think you could do that. And as such, when they talk about removing signs, they are in effect telling people that we're changing the law retroactively. A trustee spoke of, "We want to have a framework that the businessman can depend on when he comes in." Well, didn't all those people that applied for permits and paid the money and put up the signs that somebody doesn't like? Didn't they believe that they had a valid framework under the law to come in and accomplish those goals? And additionally, if you read the ordinance closely, there have actually been changes in the wording that have removed words or changed words. Most of this gets into non-conforming, but, one of the areas is that it allows non-conformities to continue, but it calls them illegal in ordinance. They're not illegal. The official term is legal non-conforming. I'd ask the attorney, but I don't want this to be a debate. But legal non-conforming, and you can't just put IL in front of it, legal, because it makes the argument for whatever group is favoring that change easier to justify. Legal non-conforming. There are also wording, specific wording about future text amendments. There are also very specific quotas that a single face replacement is allowed. And the ordinance that exists now, it talks about that you may not do anything to extend the useful service life, but that you must maintain it. That's in conflict. In the construction area, it talks about that signs must be built to a certain strength of wind resistance and to a waterproof construction. But hop back into that favorite design standards, and now all of a sudden, everything's got to be non-combustible. That's why I kept losing it. Is non-combustible material a design element? I don't think so. I would ask someone involved with construction. Now, maybe the color is a design element, but certainly not the material. It speaks specifically of plastic in what, in part of the ordinance, where feedback leads to the non-combustible. In fact, based upon the existing ordinance, every sign permit, except for the one currently pending for the window sign, which was installed before they applied for the permit, has been illegal, because every sign that's put up has major and material combustible components. So if the Village of Riverside can't follow the existing ordinance the way it's written after 10 years, does that say something about it? And trustee Pollak brought up the point of, that somebody could make a sign that's fully compliant that somebody doesn't like. This is America. We don't regulate and license only what people like. Now, I'm not saying that that's a good thing in terms of the aesthetics of it, but also, you have to think of a concept that the more, Ben and Mike Mars would appreciate this, they're lawyers, the more words there are, the more spaces there are. And the more spaces, the more places for discussion about what's really meant. Again, I would ask the question, but I don't want to debate. These are realities of life, and you know, for as complicated and restrictive as they made the sign code in 2005, and went through illegal actions to do it, has it made the district any better in 10 years? And although I've only been here almost 40, it doesn't seem to me that the downtown is any more prosperous and dynamic than it was 10 years ago. And based upon the conversation of, that we need to redo the sign ordinance, it would seem that people feel that it's gone downhill. And I appreciate the CMAP people, but they're doing planning templates, and you know, the downtown area, except for the water tower, isn't historic. You can look at a plant and see how it's laid out, and it's completely different than all the rest of the town. It has straight streets, nowhere else does. As Holstet said, it's a necessary evil. So I would like you to consider those things. The existing ordinance is not enforceable by any means, and you talk about the businessmen, I would be willing to bet the Village of Riverside $25,000 that the majority of the signs actually are owned by the property owners, because the sign's there and it's been through a succession of businesses. So somebody bought it, and then they abandoned it in place, and that changes the game. And for as bad as everybody thinks signs are, as trustee Pollak brought up, about maintenance and repair, we have a serious problem in the downtown, and for 25 years, the village, the municipal authority, has lacked the backbone to stand up and take a stand and stop. And it just keeps getting worse and worse and worse. And you can do whatever you want with the signs, and it's not going to bring that scaffold of a property owner into compliance. So we get tenants that get, that understand their specialty and they're a small business, but they don't understand real estate, they don't understand landlords, and they don't understand people who like to steal for a living. So they sign a lease, and when the roof leaks, they find out that their lease says that they have to fix it. So they don't, it leaks, it stinks, the business goes out of business, and they move on. And that's happened over and over and over. Some of the people were here for a long time. Now, I don't know how anybody else would feel, but it seems to me that black water, which is the stuff that goes down the toilet, coming in on your head of a commercial building that's owned by one guy and rests to somebody else, isn't a worse problem than what the signs look like, then we need to get our municipal priorities in order. We really do. Because we're screwing around with these little aesthetics for businesses that are going out of business while we let life safety and public health just kind of flitter around on their own. So understand the problem, understand that the ordinance you have isn't enforceable. It really isn't. And it doesn't acknowledge reality. Somebody should check on those signs with the individual letters, see how much they are, and then think about putting all those letters on a 25-foot building. This isn't 150 foot aside, it's 25 feet. Things get kind of crowded. And all these citations are in the existing ordinances. And since the sign ordinance was originally part of the zoning code, just because they split it off and put it in a different section, I don't know if that ends the legal protections on legal non-conforming uses that are created by the ordinances just because it's not in the same section. And again, that's a question for the lawyer. But when you have contradictions in an ordinance, and if I may ask this, does that make enforcement much more difficult? If you have, you can have it, but you can't have it in the same, in the same piece of paper?
Of course.
You never put that in a contract, because it opens it up for discussion. So I think that we have gone off on the wrong path, we are not alone, but if you want us dynamic downtown, then you have to get down to the root of the problem, and it's not the signs. But CMAP's not going to tell you to tune up that landlord, because it's confrontational, and they're just, they're pedestrian ways. That's fine. But I still don't see anybody walking our downtown, and I don't think that a one-block district makes for a Sunday afternoon stroll. So thank you very much. I would hope that you actually would redo the existing ordinance and take out a lot of the stuff that is just nuts, because otherwise, you're just going to continue to strangle the district, and then there won't be any sales tax money, and the buildings won't be earning anything, and then some predatory guy that's got the money will come along and buy them, and then your problem with him will get worse. Look at what he's bought in the last 25 years downtown. Very interesting reading. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Campbell. Further discussion?
I'd like to ask the village attorney a question. Is there case law, statutes, court opinions, whatever, that clearly address whether municipality has the legal authority to amortize signs? If so, what is that?
Yeah, I mean, amortization of buildings and signs, you know, is subject of a number of cases. There's authority, when we're talking about the zoning code, there's authority in the Illinois Municipal Code that says, "The powers conferred on municipalities in terms of zoning shall not be exercised so as to deprive the owner of any existing property of its use or maintenance for the purpose to which it is then lawfully devoted. But provisions may be made for the gradual elimination of uses, buildings, and structures which are incompatible with the character of the districts in which they are made or located, including," and one of the things in the list of including is... located, including," and one of the things in the list of including is, having them remove, having them eliminated when they've reached their age fixed by the corporate authorities, then municipality has the normal useful life of such buildings or structures. So, that's where that, that base authority for amortization comes from. Amortization schedules are always a little tricky, because case law hasn't set out exactly what is acceptable, but we generally agree that you can amortize buildings and signs.
Further comments?
Just one other, one other comment. Property maintenance has come up in this discussion a lot, last week and this week, and I just want to make sure, I, I think trustee Sussman said it best, the issues aren't mutually exclusive. We can address signs, and we can address property maintenance. One doesn't prevent the other. And, so I would just hope that our village staff, I'm confident their, their property maintenance is a high priority for the village staff, I know it is, and if there's anything they need from the village board to pursue that, please let us know.
We're working with attorney Mars with regard to some of those questions.
Very, very good, thank you.
So, do you have the direction that you need to report?
I think so. So, I think we're good. We'll see what I can come up with. I don't know if I will have a draft ready for you, but I'll keep you guys surprised as to whether I'll have it ready for the next agenda, if not, then hopefully for the one after that. So, we'll be good.
I think it's better to get it right than get it soon, so.
Obviously.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, first of all, I was thinking, do you think we could get demonstration of the language here that the board is supposed to include in that, so at least we have that knowledge? And then, I had a question of, would the village put on consistent language in this meeting? If, we could get those questions answered, maybe, please.
Is that good for that?
Any comment?
Any, are there anything for new business tonight? Or none? We do have a need for an executive session to consider the appointment, employment, compensation to discipline performance or dismissal of specific employees. So, I'd ask for a motion to adjourn to executive session, not to reconvene, no action will be taken in this session. Motion, Mr. Paul, second. Mr. Valerius, it's called rolling.
Trustee Sussman.
Aye.
Trustee Hamilton.
Aye.
Trustee Hall.
Aye.
Trustee Allen.
Aye.
Trustee Hall. Trustee Paul.
Means adjourned.